Good evening and welcome to the March 6, 2025, meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Calabasas. Meeting is called to order. Commissioner Hosina, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Stand. Right hand over heart. Pledge allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Don't need a roll call. We have a full complement of commissioners tonight. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is approved. Announcements and introductions. I'm going to start with Commissioner Leah.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner. Commissioner Washburn.
What's his name?
How many years has it been Commissioner Washburn?
Just wanted to let everybody know once again that there was a guest speaker that the Board of Directors of the Last Virginus Municipal Water District brought in, fellow named Scott Solatsky, who was preeminent in dealing with artificial intelligence, which he actually calls humanology instead, which is a much better term. And the meeting was about three hours long, incredible information in it. The Water District is going to be putting that up on their website. So I would say that anybody who's interested in seeing what the implications are of AI and humanology on the management of a district or a city, or even a foundation, it'd be worth your while tuning in. It may even be posted by now, but take a look at LVMWD.org. I think that's what they call themselves over there. And keep an eye on that.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Hosina? Nothing. Commissioner Harrison? Our newest commissioner. Okay. All right. Time for public comments. This is the portion of the meeting for those who wish to address the Commissioner on matters that are not on the agenda. Do we have any speaker cards?
We do not.
Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar. That's the minutes of the meeting of February 20th, as well as the adoption of Resolution 2025-806. Do any of the commissioners have any comments that would require us to move one of those, one or both of those items off of the consent calendar, or can we go ahead and move to approve the consent?
I'll move the approval of the consent agenda.
Okay. And we have a second from Commissioner Leah. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. New business. We are on to nuts and bolts of the Planning Commission and overview of the Planning Division. And I believe our, well, I'll leave it up to you, Michael. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. So just to give a quick background of what we're going to do tonight, the City Attorney's Office has requested that every two years, or basically when terms begin for planning, or for commissioners in general, that the city conduct commissioner training. Most of it will be Brown Act related, just going over what the state requires, what the legal requirements are for commissions. It'll cover things like the Brown Act rules, holding a quorum, et cetera. And so that's one component. You actually probably received an email tonight from the City Clerk's Office asking commissioners to attend that training later this month. Because that training is just really for a general commission, and the Planning Commission is a little bit special in terms of its duties, we decided, or the City Attorney's Office and I decided, that it made sense to hold a separate meeting with the Planning Commission tonight to go over the nuts and bolts of the Planning Commission. But this will also satisfy your requirements, so you don't have to attend the general training session. You can if you want to, but you don't have to. Because tonight we'll cover that, plus more, because it'll also go over specifics related to the Planning Commission. We also wanted to take this opportunity to just really provide the Planning Commission with background and just more information about, a little bit more broadly, what does the Planning Department do? What does the Community Development Department do? And how the Planning Commission's role fits into, both from an operational standpoint, but also from a project standpoint. So that's kind of an overview of where we're at and what we're hoping to provide the Commission. Again, tonight, it's educational, it's informational, and, you know, we hope it'll be beneficial. So with that, let me just jump into, what is the Community Development Department? The Community Development Department is made up of four functional divisions, and that includes the administration side. So on that side, you've got things like public records requests that come in on a daily basis. You have our executive assistants that prepare the agenda packets and manage our calendar, because in addition to the Planning Commission, there's a Development Review Committee, there's directors' hearings, there's a Historic Preservation Commission, et cetera. So all of that requires some level of management. Then you have the Planning Division. And the Planning Division is who this body interacts most with, right? So sitting across from me, we have our city planner, Tom Bartlett, and our associate planner, Joel Hayes. And they will often bring projects forward to the Planning Commission, either for a decision or for a recommendation to the City Council. Then you have the Building and Safety Department, and the Building and Safety Department is responsible for reviewing the technical components of a project that gets built. Keep in mind, this is all related to private property development. So the Community Development Department is really the gatekeeper of things that happen on private property. Public Works typically handles things that happen on city-owned property. And so, again, getting back to Building and Safety, they issue building permits, they review plan checks, they do inspections. So they're really the boots on the ground, and they conduct the plan check. And when we say "plan check," we mean compliance with building code requirements. So that really is very specific to how a building is getting constructed, you know, what kind of foundation, what kind of materials, et cetera. And then also within community development is the Code Enforcement Division. The Code Enforcement is responsible for ensuring that the community at large is following the rules of the city. And this can range from picking up illegal signs that are posted on the street, to issuing a notice of violation to a property owner that added on to their home without building permits. So it just runs the gamut. And again, the purpose of Code Enforcement is to ensure that people follow the rules of the city. And they do take an educational approach, but obviously, we do have other tools to force compliance.
Michael, may I, Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
When we're under Building and Safety, and we're talking plan check, and since this is a refresher and an educational session, I don't know whether many citizens in our city really understand the process of plan checking. Most of our homes, when they were built, were planned-checked with, by a developer, or an architect, or an engineer, whatever. But clearly, plan checking is a pretty vital component of our effort.
Correct.
If you'd maybe expand a little bit on that for the public that's listening in, and some of us who might even need a refresher course.
Absolutely. And keep in mind, what I'm going to do is, I will also try and weave all of this together, so that the Commission understands the whole development process, which the plan check is part of that. But you are right. The way that plant, or the way that construction happens in most of California, but definitely here in Calabasas, is we have a plan check division, or a plan check section within Building and Safety that reviews, again, that really is the nuts and bolts of construction. And it's all based off of the California Building Code requirements. So as a whole, the state has adopted specific criteria for how to deal with anything from plumbing, mechanical, HVAC, seismic activity, to make sure that buildings are constructed to withstand earthquakes, to fire safety. And some of those criterias can change based on where you live. So in the city of Calabasas, the entire community is in what's called the very high fire severity zone. So that increases the fire component, or the fire rating effectively, of the buildings. All of that's reviewed by our Building and Safety Department. So an applicant who, or a property owner that wants to construct on their property, they'll hire an engineer. The engineer will put together these detail, all the detailed plans that show how the building is going to be constructed, and how it's complying with the California Building Code requirements. And then they submit that to our plan check department, plan check section. And they go through every single page, every single technical note, to make sure that it meets those criteria and that component. So we're not relying on the developer or the property owner to just say, "We are meeting the requirement." No, they have to demonstrate to the city that they're meeting that requirement. Once they've met that requirement, or they demonstrated it, then building permits will be issued. So, and again, I'll try and weave that overall Building and Safety process into the rest of this.
Thank you.
So what is the Planning Commission? Well, unlike almost all the other commissions within the city, the Planning Commission is one of the only, not the only, but one of the only, that's required by state law. That's under Government Code 65100. Now, the Planning Commission doesn't have to be an independent body. It could actually be the council. So the council could appoint itself as the Planning Commission. But every planning agency, or every local jurisdiction, has to have a planning agency, and then within that planning agency, there has to be one or more planning commission. In Calabasas, under our municipal code, the Planning Commission is a separate body. And so that's what you represent. And this body is appointed by the City Council. What are the duties of the Planning Commission? Well, the top bullet point relates to the general plan, and that includes any update to the general plan. The Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the City Council. The Commission also reviews the capital improvement plan, and makes a determination as whether or not that capital improvement plan is consistent with the general plan. Because most of the commissioners here have seen that year after year. The Commission is also responsible for reviewing proposals for acquisition of public property. And there was actually a recent item here in front of the Commission for that purpose. The Commission also looks at, and makes a recommendation to the City Council for approval or modifications to specific plans, as well as holding public hearings on proposed amendments to the city's zoning ordinance. And again, in that capacity, the Commission acts as a recommendation body to the City Council. And then finally, what I believe the Commission deals with on a regular, the most regular basis, is current projects. So the Commission will hold public hearings to approve, conditionally approve, or deny certain land use entitlements. And I'll try and get into what differentiates what comes to the Commission and what does not. And before I move on from there, I just wanted to point out, I included in the packet City Council protocols, because while this does technically only apply to the City Council, it does sort of set the stage of the expectation. You know, if the City Council is setting this as an expectation, it would make sense that that expectation would exist for how its commission should operate. That being said, I know that the City Clerk is working on Planning Commission procedures and protocols as well. So that's a two come that will be happening in the future. But for now, I just thought it would be helpful to, again, point out some of these protocols that have been established by the council, and those protocols were included within the packet. Now, general plan. This is a really big one for the Planning Department. As you saw in the bullet points, that's actually one of the duties of the Planning Commission. But what is a general plan? A general plan, sorry, a general plan represents the city's comprehensive effort to define what makes Calabasas a special place, and delineate a vision for its future. It is intended to serve as a roadmap for the city, and shall be consulted when making decisions, especially land use decisions. A general plan is required by state law, and it is required to be made up of specific elements, or at least, at least, specific elements, and those include land use, conservation, noise, environmental justice, circulation, open space, safety, air quality, and housing. These, those are the mandatory elements by the state, but a general plan can actually have additional elements at the leisure of the city. So our general plan does have several different elements, like it has a community design element, and it has an infrastructure and technology element. Those are just additional above the mandatory requirements. And I have up on here, our general plan, current general plan, was adopted in 2008, and it was, is called out as a 2030 general plan. So we still have a little bit more room with our general plan. What we do with the general plan moving forward has yet to be determined, but we could update it, or we could look at an entirely comprehensive new general plan. That'll be, that's a conversation that I am having with our City Management Department, but like everything else, it will also be based off of council's decisions and priorities based on needs and resources. Since the general plan was adopted in 2008, there have been various amendments, and there are updates along the way, small updates that the Commission has seen, but I only highlighted the major amendments, because they were significant changes. As you can see, three of them, or two of them, related to the housing element, and that's because, under the state, in Southern California, we are required to update our housing element every nine years, or every eight years. So you see the cycle that happens. In 2015, it was updated, it was updated again in 2022. The next update will be required around 2029. And then with our last housing update, housing element update, that triggered a couple of state requirements to update both our safety element and our circulation element. So those were also correspondingly updated. And because the duties of the Planning Commission require reviewing those updates, those were all processed and reviewed by the Planning Commission, and then recommended to the City Council. And I just want to give a nod out to our housing element, which, again, the last one was actually adopted, or truly updated, in 2021. However, the state didn't certify it yet, so we had to make some changes. So that's why I previously listed that the formal update happened in 2022, because after the 2022 adoption, that's when the state certified our housing element. And we were among the first cities in all of the SCAG region, which is several hundred jurisdictions, that had its housing element both adopted and certified by the state. So moving on to land use entitlements, because as I had mentioned, this is something that the Commission sees most regularly. The previous items that I discussed, like the general plan, the housing element, we consider that to be long-range planning, because the decision that's made now is not, is not resulting in something happening tomorrow. It's effectively setting a stage for what can happen in the future. So we consider that to be long-range planning. Ordinance updates are long-range. Development of a specific plan or a master plan is long-range. But a lot of what the Planning Commission sees are land use entitlements, and we call that, we consider that to be current planning. And I want to bring to your attention, there are really two very distinct types of entitlements. You have ministerial permits, and you have discretionary permits. Ministerial permits are, well, as it describes here, they're the type of application that really don't require any subjective component or discretion on behalf of the decision-maker. And they're supposed to, they're intended to just be objective in nature. And examples that I have in here are things like a small residential addition, ADUs, tenant improvements. If someone comes in and they want to build a pool on their property, it's not a question as to whether or not they can build a pool on their property. They just have to meet very specific requirements. It has to be set back a certain distance from the property line, has to be set back from the house, and they have to make sure they have a certain permeability requirement left on the property. That's just something, there's really no discretion or subjectivity on the planner's end. They either meet the requirement, or they don't. And what will happen is, they submit it, the planner will review it, they'll provide feedback, they might have to make some changes, and then eventually, the planner would approve that project. Ministerial projects, by nature, do not require a public hearing, and should not require a public hearing, because again, there's no real question of whether or not it can be there. It's just a matter of how they're demonstrating compliance. A discretionary entitlement is one that can involve more judgment or deliberation by the decision-making body. And a discretionary action can still happen at a staff level. So as I have put on this slide, that could be at the director level, so we hold director hearings, or it could be at the Planning Commission or the City Council level. And examples of this include medium-to-large residential additions, new single-family homes, multifamily projects, construction within a scenic corridor, mixed-use projects. All of these are projects that require more deliberation and involve more judgment. It also, the key here, too, is that it also requires adoption of findings by the decision-maker, whether it's the director or the Planning Commission. And it does, in most cases, it will also require a public hearing. And again, if a project's in front of the Planning Commission, it is most likely a discretionary project, it will most likely require the adoption of findings, and it will require a public hearing. Now, I have this slide in here, because this is a term that we're going to have to start getting very familiar with because of state law. In fact, we, the council just approved a contract for the city to move forward with objective design standards. If the Commission remembers, we brought this concept up about a year ago, and we sought direction from the Commission on how to pursue pre-approved ADUs and objective design standards. And so, based on that feedback, we issued an RFP. The, a lot of that is mandated by the state, because the state has identified specific types of projects that are not allowed to be reviewed under the subjective, or under subjective criteria. Or, I guess the other way to say it, is they can only be reviewed under objective criteria. And that applies to specific types of housing projects, for sure. And so we issued an RFP, and have, we're going to start working on the objective design standards for multifamily and mixed-use projects that qualify under the state requirements. But what does an objective design standard mean? Well, first off, it is defined by the state. So I have here on the top, California Government Code, Section 65913.4 is defined, that's where it's defined, and it is something that the state has specifically defined for cities. In a nutshell, what that means is that an objective design standard shall involve no personal judgment by a public official or decision-maker, and it shall provide quantifiable and concise direction for when and how to apply development requirements. In contrast to that, a subjective design standard is one that lacks specificity and requires judgment by a decision-maker. And so, on here, just again, as an example, this would demonstrate preference while allowing discretion and flexibility, and the lack of specificity may allow for personal opinion and arbitrary interpretation. Now, as we think about what the Planning Commission usually looks at, findings tend to be subjective in nature. One of the findings under the site plan review is that the project is compatible in size, scale, and appearance with the surrounding area. That's highly subjective. Everyone's version of compatibility can be quite different. And so, that type of finding is something that the state is mandating that cities have to stay away from when it comes to certain housing projects. And the purpose of the objective design standards that we're engaging affirm is to somehow quantify the subjective elements that are important to the community. So architecture is very important, scale is very important. We're hoping that we can now somehow quantify it, so that it's, it can be reviewed objectively, and then meet that state requirement. And then here are some really good examples of the difference between a subjective standard and an objective standard. So, and I have it broken down into three different categories. If you're looking at site planning, a subjective standard is, long expanses of fence or wall surfaces should be offset and architecturally designed to prevent monotony and landscape pockets, and landscape pockets should be provided. Again, that could be five different opinions on how to accomplish that. So instead, an objective standard says that new residential fencing shall not exceed 20 feet in length without a three-foot minimum offset, with landscape pockets provided for a minimum of 25% of the overall length. Well, now, there's no question if they can meet that criteria or not. And you can see, there's building and design examples, and then examples for utilities as well. Again, the key difference is that on the subjective side, it's just open for interpretation. On the objective side, it should, it could, it should be as easy as a check-in-the-box. They either meet that criteria, or they don't. So, the development process. The reason why I have this slide and the next several slides is really to just kind of help the Commission understand where their role fits into the overall process of a project getting built. And I have up on here the four different boxes. The Planning Commission, because the Planning Commission's involved in making decisions on land use entitlements, that's a component of the project. And as Commissioner Washburn brought up, there's still the building plan check, and there's, there's other parts of construction. But I wanted to just try and help the Commission understand where they fit in with, within the process. And so, here, you know, this is, on this whole list, the Planning Commission is in the planning and sequence side. Everything else that happens after that box is Building and Safety, Public Works, and additional planning staff. But the Planning Commission's involvement is here in the, in the planning side. And what does that look like? Well, the land use entitlement process is entirely lined out within our municipal code, or outlined within the municipal code, and specifically Title 17. So it's, you know, the Planning Commission, their focus, your focus is Title 17. And what does Title 17 have? It describes the type of permits that are required. So if, when someone comes to the counter, and they tell the city what they want to do, it's outlined here in the, in Title 17, whether or not they need a permit, and what kind of permit they need. And the permit doesn't have to be related just to construction. So the Commission will see permits for conditional use permits to sell alcohol on a property. It's, so it's really, how is the property being utilized? And because construction is, is a key component of that, the permits can involve anything from, again, a conditional use permit, to a site plan review that looks at the, how the site is being developed. Title 17 also includes standards. So the department will report to the Planning Commission as to whether or not a project meets those, meets specific standards. That could be everything from height setbacks, floor area ratio, et cetera. And the, and the Title 17 will outline it based on the zone that it's in, the type of use that it's proposing. So the standards that are applicable can vary based on the nature of the project. And then finally, Title 17 dictates the process in which a applicant has to go through, based on the type of permit that's required. This outlines the noticing requirements, it outlines the public hearing process, it even outlines the appeal process. So we're not at a staff level, we're not making these decisions independently. It's already outlined and spelled out what we have to do within the municipal code. And so, all of that that was in that first box is what's captured here on this chart. And I gave you guys, I gave the Commission a similar chart. I couldn't fit it on this in a landscape format, so I had to rework it. But just to kind of go through it, the top left is really sort of right when an application is submitted to the city, and it goes through a review process with staff. As a application is vetted, that's more or less, did they submit everything that we need to process an application? So for example, if they did not include a grading plan, or they didn't include elevations, then staff would render a notice of incompleteness, and let the applicant know that then staff would render a notice of incompleteness and let the applicant know that they're missing documents, that we cannot continue to process this application until they submit A, B, and C. Once we're at a point where we have the documents that we need to continue to process it, then we move on to the lower portion of that screen, which is inclusive, and I say concurrent review because it's, it's inclusive of continuing review by the department or by the planning division for conformance with the municipal code, state requirements, et cetera, and also SEQA. So, SEQA is a component of every project that's reviewed by the city, it is mandated by the state. Some projects are categorically exempt, so if you see that arrow, if it's categorically exempt, then there's not much more that has to happen from a SEQA standpoint. By the way, SEQA is California Environmental Quality Act. And from there, if a project is subject to SEQA, then it'll go through a concurrent process where the city will engage a consultant, a consulting firm, that environmental firm will prepare an initial study, based on the results of the initial study, it can determine what kind of documents required. The purpose of SEQA is to provide, is to allow transparency in the process and, and allow the public to comment on environmental decisions that a project may have. But again, all of that's happening concurrently with the rest of the review process, and these boxes represent those steps that have been outlined in our municipal code. That includes things like going to the architectural review panel, putting up, I don't know if I have this in here, but putting up story polls, having a second community development forum if it's applicable. Now, at any point within this process, if something changes or the, based on a, let's say, a grading plan that comes in, there's a problem, it could actually kick them right back to the very top quadrant, to the top-left. So really, this piece right there can take anywhere from a couple months for a smaller project to years for a larger project. And ultimately, what gets funneled to the planning commission is the result of what happens throughout that process. And once we hit a point where there's a public hearing, on the right-hand side, that's where you see the, the flow chart. The important thing here is that the planning commission, any decision of the planning commission can either be called up for review to the council, or it can be appealed. So, either the applicant or any member of the community can appeal a decision from the planning commission, and then it would go to the city council. If the, but otherwise, the planning commission's decision is a final decision on specific projects, and we will make that clear, right? So, the planning commission will know if they're rendering a decision, or if they're making a recommendation to the city council.
Michael, uh, can you give us a, a quick summary on the, I guess, the age and content of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA? Because we all presume that it is a thing that is dictating what we have to deal with, but it's, at the state level, you know, an evolving document as well?
Yeah.
But it, it does obviously reach a steady state so that we can then plan around all the impacts that come from that assessment.
Correct. Now, I, I don't know the age, I know it's older than me, but I'm not sure how much older. Uh, I'd actually defer that question to John, because he's an expert in SEQA.
Actually, SEQA was created in nineteen seventy-two, and it was modeled after the National Environmental Policy Act, that I believe went into effect, which is a federal version in like nineteen seventy-one. And so, it was adopted, as you stated, it's gone through many changes over the years, and we'll talk about that a little later in my part of the presentation. And it's going through even more significant changes now, because there appears to be a conflict between the housing crisis we're dealing with and the need to construct more housing, and SEQA's requirements to do the analysis of potential environmental impacts from projects. So, we're seeing a lot more projects being exempt from SEQA based upon legislative mandate. But lots of changes, and we can talk about that in a little bit, but it's, I think SEQA is the one area of law where there are more reported court decisions every year than any other area of law. Usually, there's twenty to twenty-five reported decisions related to SEQA every year, and every decision has the potential to change the interpretation of SEQA. So, it's, it's kind of a crazy area of law to practice in. I find it fascinating, but...
So, if I may jump in briefly, mentioned legislative mandates, well, it's the case law that probably drives as much as legislation. And so, getting a SEQA update at the APA conference was always the most oversubscribed session in every conference, and that's why, you get to hear lawyers.
All right, the last thing that I want to point out on this slide is, as complex as that flow chart is, the other thing that the planning division has to manage are the timelines. So, the state has very specific timelines called the Permit Streamlining Act that dictate how long we have to actually process something. So, you know, keep in mind that, that this is, again, the, the planning division is really trying to piece together this complicated process, and also managing a relatively strict timeline that has been established by the state. So, like I mentioned, that whole thing, or all of that, was really just the planning and SEQA side of the development process. What happens after that? So, after it's gone through all of that, it has, a project has gone through the planning commission, or maybe the city council, a decision has been made. Again, the, the decision at the planning stage is, at the land use entitlement, is really a question of whether or not a property can be used in a specific manner, right? Can I build a house on this property this way? Can I sell alcohol on my property? Can I build a car wash, et cetera? Once that decision has been made, and an applicant knows that, yes, I can actually build a house on my property, now they will enter into the building and safety and public works phase. And this is really, how am I gonna do that? So, like I had mentioned earlier, the California Building Code dictates a lot of requirements for how something has to be constructed. Everything from the type of foundation to the type of wood frame that you have to use to the, um, the way that you have to design your HVAC system to be energy efficient. So, and, and the California Building Code gets updated every three years, and they do make it stricter and stricter every year. My understanding, and I'm not a builder, so I, you know, I can't speak with my own personal knowledge, but my understanding from the community is that the California Building Code requirements are the most robust in the nation. They require the most energy efficiency, they require the most fire hardening, they are the most stringent on earthquake safety, et cetera, et cetera. And so, like I had mentioned earlier, once an application is approved at the land use stage, then an applicant will hire an engineer, or many engineers, to develop different components of, of development project, and then it will get submitted, some, most of it will get submitted to the building and safety department, but other pieces will get submitted to public works, because public works reviews the grading permit for any project, and there are other agencies that are involved as well. So, the fire department has to review, uh, plan checks to make sure that it meets the fire department requirements, um, it could trigger fish and wildlife to be involved, it could trigger, um, LA County Health, et cetera, et cetera. So, our building and safety department will identify and flag what additional agencies are required to be, are required to be involved in the review phase. And again, looking at building and safety, building and safety pretty much lives in Title 15 of the, of the municipal code. Like I just mentioned, the California building codes are updated every three years. The City of Calabasas will adopt those building codes, again, every three years, incorporate them within Title 15. On occasion, the building official will recommend local modifications, but in general, there's not really a, unless there's a compelling reason, we'll, we will adopt the building codes as they are, uh, adopted by the state. But within Title 15, very similar to Title 17, it describes what kind of permits are required, so what do you need? Construction, alteration, repair, demo, maintenance? What standards are applied to that type of permit? Foundation, structural, mechanical, et cetera? And then Title 15 establishes the process, so it goes through the plan check process, inspection, and then certifications. And then you have here on the construction and post-construction side, this is really the boots-on-the-ground. So, once a project has been issued, building permits and a grading permit, now the contractor comes in and they start building, supposed to build per the plan. Well, building and safety has inspectors, and public works also has inspectors that are out there on a regular basis to ensure that what is called out on the plan is being constructed per that plan. That doesn't mean that changes don't happen in the field, because they do, they will have to resolve those changes somehow with the city. Sometimes, it even will require them to either revert back to what they were approved, because the change that they made is, uh, not allowed, or they might have to halt the project and go back to even the planning commission to request that modification. And other times, based on the type of change, it's something that can be, um, approved at a staff level. But again, the, this construction is really the boots-on-the-ground, and then post-construction is, once a building permit has been issued, or a CFO has been issued, the building is done from a development process standpoint, but there are, could still be condition compliance and monitoring actions that the city is involved in. So, that's why I have that kind of highlighted together. And then the, the final piece to all of this puzzle is the condition compliance, and the commission's very familiar with the conditions, because our resolutions that come before the commission include recommended conditions of approval for a project. And when staff prepares these draft, these draft conditions, staff is really thinking about, when does it make sense for the condition to comply or to be applied? So, you've got conditions that should be applied before structure, construction, during construction, and then after construction. And same thing with SEQA and monitoring. A pretty good example of this is lighting, right? Lighting is, uh, something that's very difficult to determine at the onset, so usually at the planning stage, when a planning entitlement comes in front of the planning commission, the property owner, applicant, developer, they have a general sense of where they need to put lighting, but they haven't necessarily identified the specific lighting fixtures and how they're, you know, how tall a light, a pole will be, what kind of shielding they're gonna use, et cetera. They haven't figured that part out, because they don't know if they have a project yet, and it could take them three or four years before they need to even purchase those fixtures. So, really, from, from that standpoint, lighting's a, it's a tricky one, and what'll happen is, we will often condition the project, if it's a larger project, we'll condition that the applicant shall submit a lighting plan to the planning division before a permit's issued for those lights, and that lighting plan needs to demonstrate that it is in compliance with our municipal code. At that point, the planner will take that lighting plan, verify that what they're proposing in terms of the height of the poles, the, uh, love, we call it foot candle levels, which is basically how strong the light is on the ground, and whether or not they need shielding, if, making sure that that all meets our requirements within the municipal code. And if it doesn't, then the planner tells the applicant they need to revise that lighting plan so that it does. At some point, once there's an agreement or confirmation that it meets our municipal code, the planner will approve that lighting plan. So, that kind of happens before the permit's issued. Then, while the project's under construction, oftentimes, you know, the, the lighting plan may say one thing, but then the, the developer, or the, the contractor, I should say, puts in a higher wattage bulb than what the lighting plan approved. So, the planner will go out during construction at night, ten o'clock at night, and walk the site with a monitor to determine and make sure that it actually is consistent with the lighting plan. If it's not, then the planner won't issue, won't allow a certificate of occupancy to be issued until they fix it. And then, at that point, so that's the construction side, and even after that, the lighting requirement still is in place and it's ongoing. So, down the road, the property manager might change out the bulb, and if we get a complaint, planner will be back out there, test the lighting levels, if it's off, they will tell the property owner, and the property owner will have to fix those, the lighting level. So, you know, that's an example. Conditions can really come at different stages, so we want to be mindful of how and when a condition should apply. And kind of like how I just demonstrated, this activity can include anything from collecting reports, visiting the site, taking photo, photographs, taking in bonds, et cetera. There are also, in many projects, hundred, two-hundred conditions, and a lot of those conditions may be, um, in the jurisdiction of an outside agency. So, this oftentimes will require coordination with the fire department, with the water district, uh, with LA County sanitation, et cetera. So, just, um, again, the condition compliance is, is a, a important piece, and it's all, it can take place at really any time within that, that table that I brought up, the, before a permit's issued, during construction, and then post-construction. And with that, I will turn it over to John, who will go through the rest of this.
Great. So, um, we're gonna return back to the California Environmental Quality Act briefly. And the California Environmental Quality Act, its intent is to inform the public and decision-makers as the potential, as to the potential environmental effects of a project, and really, it focuses on the physical environment, it doesn't talk, really, it does not focus on socio-economic effects, as well as inform the public as to ways to mitigate those potential significant environmental effects. So, it's really about transparency. It, SEQA alone does not stop projects. It is, it's an intent, its intent is to be informational, to inform the public. The result may be that the decision-makers may decide not to approve a project because of its environmental effects, but that's not the purpose of SEQA, it's to inform and hopefully mitigate impacts. So, SEQA involves a three-step process, because SEQA has to be completed before a project can be approved. So, the first step is, do you have a project under SEQA, as defined by SEQA? And do you have an approval that's coming up? So, what is a project under SEQA? And it's kind of, you know, typical legal definition, but it's the whole of an action that has the potential to cause a significant environmental effect on the environment, and includes either actions by a public agency, which would involve, like, public works projects, constructing a new, um, you know, uh, a new theater or a new event center, or, uh, projects that are funded with public funds, or projects that require, um, a government permit. And that's where you come in, is the planning commission, because you approve permits, and therefore, you're also responsible for approving the SEQA determination for a particular project. So, we start with that, do you have a project? If you have a project under SEQA, the second part of it is, is it exempt under SEQA? And we talked briefly about potential exemptions, categorical exemptions, statutory exemptions, and what is known as the common sense exemption. So, why don't I start with statutory exemptions? Statutory exemptions are exemptions that have been legislated by the state legislature, and they have basically say, if you meet these requirements, and they're all set forth in the Public Resources Code, uh, then it doesn't matter if your project may cause a significant impact on the environment, you're approved. And the reason for that is the legislature has determined that certain projects should be approved even if they may cause significant impacts on the environment. So, that's the first category. The second is a categorical exemption, and categorical exemptions are, um, classes of projects that, um, the Department of Natural Resources within the state of California has determined generally do not cause significant impacts on the environment. But, um, if you meet the requirements of a categorical exemption, um, there's phase two, there are exceptions to the exemption. If you, if your project, um, falls within any of the exceptions to the exemption, then you cannot utilize the exemption. So, the types of projects that you see a lot of, you see a lot of projects involving, um, uh, you know, tenant improvements, um, you know, use, use issues with regard to, you know, veterinarian hospitals, things like that, and you see a lot of single-family homes. So, you'll see that there is a determination that generally those are exempt from SEQA. Under the categorical exemptions, usually you'll see the class-three categorical exemption, which relates to, um, new construction of small structures. And what falls within that? And what falls within that? Single-family house. The other thing is, the Class I exemption is improvements to existing facilities. So, that's where you see the tenant improvements related to approval of a new veterinary hospital. So, if you determine that the project is not exempt from SEQA, then the next step is to do what is called an initial study. And it's basically kind of a high-level review of the project to analyze whether or not it could potentially, it may have a significant impact on the environment, and you cover all topics from aesthetics, to biological resources, to cultural resources, to traffic, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, public facilities, all those things. And you do that analysis. And if you determine, if the public agency determines that after going through all that analysis, the project will not cause a significant impact on the environment, then what is adopted is what is called a negative declaration, saying, "We've looked at everything, this will not cause any impacts, significant impacts," and we adopt the negative declaration. However, if you go through that process in the initial study and you say, "Ah, there's one area where we may have a significant impact on the environment, but there's a way that we can reduce that impact to less than significant," that's called a mitigation measure, and that would be imposed on the project. And in that case, you would adopt a mitigated negative declaration. So, if you do the initial study, and you determined, however, that even with imposing mitigation measures, you cannot reduce all the impacts to less than significant, that's when you have to do the environmental impact report. And that is generally an 18-month to two-year process of significant, deep-level analysis of the potential environmental effects on a project. So, understandably, applicants are not looking forward to doing an environmental impact report. I talked briefly about the fact that, in the state, housing is a big issue because we have a housing crisis. And so, the legislature has been, over the last few years, adopting legislation to either make certain housing projects ministerial, and therefore, they're not subject to SEQA, ministerial projects are not subject to SEQA, or establishing new exemptions, statutory exemptions, to exempt certain types of housing projects. So, that is facilitating those projects that might otherwise have to prepare an environmental impact report. Next slide. Yeah?
Let me turn my mic on here. I've been involved with, you know, a significant EIR process in Topanga Lagoon and the restoration before the fire, long before, actually. And other terms popped up during that timeframe and requirements, I think a PEIR, or I guess preliminary environmental impact report, and then ultimately-
Program.
Program, and then ultimately, an FEIR, final environmental impact report. Are those kinds of things pertinent to this discussion?
They can be, and I can briefly talk about that process. It's kind of going deeper into the environmental impact report process, but I can walk through it really quickly. So, the first step is the, when you're preparing an EIR, the first step is to prepare what is called a draft EIR. And that is then, and that does all the initial analysis, it's published for what generally is a 45-day comment period. People comment on the draft EIR, they state their objections, they, you know, whatever. They say, "The analysis is not good in this area, you need more mitigation to address potential significant impacts in that area." So, you'll get all these comments that come in during that 45-day comment period. And what happens next is the preparation of the final EIR. And so, what is the final EIR? It's the draft EIR plus any changes and corrections made to the draft EIR as a separate document, and responses to all the comments that were received during that 45-day comment period. So, that would be the final EIR that you would ultimately see, and that would ultimately go to the decision-maker for what is called certification. That's what they would certify. So, the final EIR is, the draft EIR is part of the final EIR.
And there are time constraints on each of those, you mentioned for the programmatic, 45 days is the term in which you would consider responses and, or comments, and then responses to comments. How about the final environmental impact report? What are the time constraints in that issue?
So, technically, EIRs are supposed to be statutorily completed in 18 months, and they're only supposed to be 300 pages. I've never seen an EIR that's 300 pages, so maybe the introduction is-
It's quantity, not quality?
Yeah. And, you know, environmental consultants, you know, they throw the kitchen sink into the EIRs to try to make sure they've covered everything. And really, to go to Tom's point, the case law has forced this, because courts are nitpicking these environmental documents and saying, "Well, you didn't quite cover this area well enough, you need to have done more." So, now, you have these EIRs that are incredibly dense, very difficult to read for many people, because they're really trying to address all of the objections that have been raised, and the court decisions that have addressed those objections. So, anyway, but that's the basic process.
Thank you.
So, let's talk about quasi-judicial actions. So, quasi-judicial actions are, involve the application of pre-existing laws or standards to a specific project. And what the commission does generally is, you are dealing in a quasi-judicial capacity. You are applying the zoning code to a proposed project and determining, does that proposed project meet the requirements of the zoning code? Those, and your decisions, as you know, must be based on findings, and those findings have to be supported with substantial evidence. And substantial evidence is facts, reasonable assumptions based on facts, expert opinion based on facts. And really, a general definition is, it's relevant evidence that a reasonable mind might accept as adequate to support a conclusion, or evidence of ponderable legal significance that is reasonable in nature, credible, and of solid value. Substantial evidence does not include argument, speculation, unsubstantiated opinion, and evidence that is clearly erroneous or inaccurate. And so, it's not only that you adopt findings, but you also have to have the evidence to support the findings. And even more important than that, that evidence has to be in the record of proceedings. So, it needs to be in the information that you have considered when you're making your findings. You cannot rely, the commission, no commissioner can rely upon evidence that they gain from a third source in making their decisions. It's got to be evidence that has been considered and is part of these record of proceedings. So, that raises an issue that has come up in many cities, where, you know, commissioners will go out and do independent investigation, and they'll say, "Oh, you know, I'm really interested in this project." So, they go out and visit the site, and they look around. And that's, you can do that, and that's something you can do. But the important thing is, is that if you gain information during that investigation that you do, or in talking with people, that needs to be communicated at the public hearing, so it's part of the record, and it can be questioned, it can be discussed, it can be considered by the commission, and responded to perhaps by staff, so that it's part of the record of proceedings. And once it's part of that, then it's evidence that potentially could be relied upon to support a finding. Does that make sense, what I'm saying on that? So, my recommendation is, is if, you know, this is a very engaged planning commission, if you go out and visit a site or drive by it and you see something, you should, and that was significant to you and your thoughts about the project, that should be communicated before the public hearing opens, so that the applicant has a chance to discuss it, staff has a chance to discuss it, and it can be considered, and potentially be part of the evidence that either supports the approval or supports the denial of a project. So, next slide. So, conditions of approval. So, there's case law that says, the ability to deny a project implies the ability to condition the project so that you can approve it. So, when you're making your findings, you may say, "Well, I can't really make that finding," for whatever reason. We had a project recently where they were concerned about use of palms, palm trees, and there was concern about public health and safety of use of palm trees as part of the development. And so, what was the decision to condition the project so that you wouldn't have palm trees that were part of the project? So, that's an example where you condition a project so that you address an issue that may affect your ability to make a particular finding. So, again, in order to impose a condition, you need to have substantial evidence to support that. And then, on top of that, conditions are potentially subject to constitutional takings issues. So, I kind of lay out what the three-step process is when you're asking for the payment of impact fees, or the construction of improvements related to the project. So, you have to identify legitimate government interests served by the exaction or fee. So, let's say you determine that a project has a potential to cause a traffic safety issue, but there's a way to fix it, and you want to impose that fix on the project. So, you would then need to show that the particular condition actually and directly addresses the interest or solves the problem. You're addressing the traffic safety issue, and then you have to establish that the amount of the exaction or fee is roughly proportional to the burdens imposed by the proposed development project. So, that's called rough proportionality. So, you've probably heard maybe the Nolan-Dolan test, or the Nexus and Rough Proportionality test. And that's, that's the test we're talking about under the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments of the California, the United States Constitution. Next slide. So, now, we're going to switch a little bit over into some potential conflicts issues, and wanted to talk briefly about the Levine Act, because it's often the case that commissions are a stepping stone for people to decide to run for elected office, whether that's city council, or county board supervisors, or the like. And so, the Levine Act says that, while a proceeding involving a license, permit, or other entitlement for use is pending, and for 12 months following the date, a final decision is rendered in the proceeding, an officer of an agency, which would include the planning commission, shall not accept, solicit, or direct a direct contribution of more than $500 from any party, or a party's agent, or from any participant, or a participant's agent, if the officer knows or has reason to know that the participant has a financial interest in the decision. So, the way this comes up is, you know, you're campaigning, and someone says, "Hey, I'd love to donate to your campaign." And you say, "Great." And they give you a check for $800. And then, next thing you learn is that they've got a permit pending before you're the planning commission, and you're a planning commissioner as well. So, what you would need to do in that circumstance is either recuse yourself from participating in that decision at all, and say, "I'm not going to be involved," or what you have to do is, you have to return that portion of the contribution that exceeds the $500 within 30 days of being made aware of the fact that that person has a financial interest in that permit. So, in that case, if you, they gave you an $800 donation, you'd have to give $300 back, and you'd then be within the boundaries of the Levine Act. Next slide. The other interesting area is the area of impermissible bias of a decision-maker, and this is beyond financial conflicts of interest. Because when you're doing quasi-judicial determinations, due process requires that the decision-maker be fair and impartial. A personal interest or involvement in the outcome of a matter, or with any participant that is unrelated to the merits, requires disqualification. However, this rule does not preclude holding opinions, philosophies, or strong feelings about issues or specific project. It also does not prohibit expression of views about matters of importance to the community. The standard is an unacceptable probability of actual bias. And so, I wanted to give just a couple of quick examples of what rose to the level where a court said, "You know what? There was an unacceptable probability of actual bias." The first involved is called the Nasha versus City of Los Angeles case. It involved a member of one of the area planning commissions of the city of LA. And there was a development coming forward to that area planning commission for five single-family houses on rather large lots. And one of the commissioners was part of a community group, and he was adamantly opposed to this project, because it was going to affect biological resources and the like. So, what he did is, he drafted for that community group, their newsletter, a whole article stating why people should come out and oppose the project. And he did not reveal that to anyone. And then, of course, it came before the planning commission, they denied the project, and that information was revealed, that in fact, he had written this article opposing the project. And not surprisingly, a court said, "That's, that meets the standard of an unacceptable probability of actual bias." So, it's a very, I would say, a very high standard. I mean, you really have to go pretty far in order to be there, but it can happen, and it's something just to be aware of. The other case I was just going to mention to you is Woody's versus City of Newport Beach case. It involved a conditional use permit for, to allow for a bar and restaurant to stay open till 2:00 AM in the morning. Their planning commission approved it. A city council member decided he was going to appeal it to the city council. There was no process that he followed that allowed for the city council member to appeal as he did. Anyway, they did it, and he had presented a very detailed presentation as to why this project should be denied, and the court said, "You, that commission, that council member had an unacceptable probability of actual bias, and therefore overturned the denial of the project." So, those are kind of examples to be aware of. Again, you can have your opinions, you can express your points of view. My recommendation is, is the best time to do that is after the close of the public hearing, after all the comments are in. That's when you express your views. There's a danger during the process where, after staff gives its presentation, there's, the chair asks, "Do you have any questions of staff?" And you ask, start asking questions of staff, and not necessarily here, but I've seen it in other planning commissions that I've dealt with, those questions turn into comments on the project, and suddenly, you're discussing the merits of the project during the question period before the public hearing is even opened. And that can create this idea that there's some bias before the public hearing has even been conducted. So, just be aware of that as you're going through it, not to stop the deliberation, but just save it for after the public hearing has closed, so that you can have that discussion. Yes?
What kind of sanctions have you seen in dealing with these kinds of issues?
So, the real sanction, and the one that concerns me as counsel to a commission, is the commission's decisions are set aside. So, all the work that the commission did to consider the project and approve the project or deny the project can be just put aside because of some of this type of activity. And that, that's my concern as the counsel to the commission, is to protect your decision-making, so that if anyone wants to challenge your decisions, we'll be able to successfully defend it in court. And so, we try to avoid some of these other things that happen. There are, you know, commissions that have sanctioned commissioners. Some activities have turned into, like the mayor of LA established a rule for- Some activities have turned into, like the mayor of LA established a rule for all the commissions saying that they cannot have any communications with any third parties regarding a project. And that's coming before the commission. Said, no communications, no talking to anyone. Because there were concerns that commissioners were, and developers and others were influencing commissioners before the item came before the planning commission. So. Next slide. Role of city attorney, real quick. My role is to provide legal advice to the planning commission and its members, including regarding potential conflicts of interest, and ensure the actions of the planning commission comply with applicable federal, state, and local laws and regulations. And really, I see my role as really wanting to defend your decisions. So when you make a decision, I want to ensure that if it gets challenged in court, we'll be able to defend it. And that's why I'm here, is to protect your decisions. My role is not to provide opinions or advice regarding strictly policy matters or considerations, whether it's a good project or not. You know, I may have my personal views, but that is not material to my role here. So you won't hear me saying, I think that's a terrible project. No, that's not my role. That, that's what you guys get to make the decisions about. So anyway, next slide. So this is on the whole area of financial conflicts of interest. And it's the area of the 500, the 500-foot rule. So if you own property or you reside in property that is, or own property as within 500 feet of a property in which a public official has a financial interest, you own the property, there is a presumption that that decision on that property will have a material impact on the public official's financial interest. So what does that mean? That means that it's important that you as commissioners, as these projects come up, look at the address and say, do, does, does the house that I own and where I live, is that within 500 feet or is it close? Or it could be? And reach out to staff and say, hey, can you tell me if I'm within 500 feet? The second thing is, it is presumed that a decision involving property 1,000 feet or more from the official's property will not have a material impact on the official's interest. So less than 500, presumption it will. More than 1,000 or 1,000 feet or more, it will not. And then you have in the middle, let's say you're 750 feet from the project location. That, the, the determination as to whether or not it will have a final, financial interest on your property or financial effect on your property is dependent upon numerous factors, including impacts on income potential, development potential, market value, highest to best use, traffic, parking, privacy, air quality. So if you fall into that category, you really have two options. One is you can just recuse yourself and say, you know what, I just, I'm going to be safe. The other thing is you can reach out to me or you can reach out to staff and say, you know what, this is a really important project. I don't think, even though I'm within 800 feet of the site, I really don't think that based upon the factors to be considered, that, that it's going to have a financial, it's, it's going to affect my financial interest. And then we can discuss about what steps are necessary in order to establish that on the record so that you can participate in the decision.
Could I interrupt briefly, John? Just to pick up on the first part of 500 feet. We do a 500-foot notice here. The state law is 300 feet, but Calabasas requires 500. So if you receive a public hearing notice, that's clue number one, you're in the 500 feet.
That's good to know. Thank you. So, next slide. So briefly, the Brown Act. So this is California's open meeting law. And it's really, the intent is to ensure that decisions are made open and public and that decisions aren't made in, behind closed doors. And so what I really wanted to focus on in this section, which is really the last part of the presentation, is what constitutes a meeting? And talk about serial meetings or where problems can occur. So a meeting means any congregation of a majority of the members of a legislative body at the same time and location, including permitted teleconference locations, to hear, discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. So, so if you have a meeting, you have to meet certain requirements for the meeting. It has to be agendized, it has to be noticed, 72 hours notice, special meeting, 24 hours notice, and the like. Obviously, planning commission meetings are Brown Act meetings and they're properly noticed. So, but you can also have a meeting if a majority of this commission is at a Starbucks and sitting around and having a cup of coffee and you say, hey, you know, there's this project coming up next week. What do you think about it? Or, you know, and the like. And suddenly that turns into a Brown Act meeting. And so that is just something to be aware of when you're out. The other one is a serial meeting. Let's say two of you meet for coffee and you talk about a project, which you can do because it's not, you know, it's not a majority of, of quorum of. And then one of you leaves, but two more of commissioners come in and you say, hey, I was just talking to Commissioner Washburn about this project and these were my concerns. That's when you have a serial meeting where it wasn't all at the same time, but things are being communicated that way. That can also occur through intermediaries such as a developer representative meets with you and says, hey, you know, I want to tell you about my project, which is fine, they can do that. But if they start telling you what, that they met with another commissioner, and this is what the other commissioner said about the project, that is where you have issues. Because once they tell you about what four commissioners thought about the project, then that potentially creates a Brown Act violation. And then finally, emails is a, is a way that you can have potentially a Brown Act violation. So let's say I send, or Michael sends an email to all of you saying, here, here's information about this particular project. And then you reply all and you start talking about the project or asking questions about the project. That has the potential to create a Brown Act violation. So obviously, and you'll see at the end of those types of emails, it's like, please do not reply all. Only reply to the person that sent it so as to avoid a Brown Act violation. So that, I think that's it for me.
Yeah, thank you. So just in summary, wrapping everything up. The planning commission is established by the government code and it is a function of the plan, planning agency, sorry. The duties of the commission include recommendations to city council on the general plan, capital improvement projects, land acquisition, updates to the zoning ordinance, approvals of specific plans, and is a decision made for, for quasi judicial actions such as certain land use entitlements. Decisions of the planning commission are a critical part, part of the development process, like we talked about. And finally, as was just covered by John, the planning commission is a Brown Act body subject to all the relevant state laws. I really hope that the commission got something from this. And like I mentioned, this does cover the, the upcoming training.
Well, thank you very much. And, and Michael and John, excellent presentation. You know, necessarily an overview, but within that context, very thorough. And I, I think it was, you know, valuable information for our, our newest commissioners and really good reminders for our, our more seasoned commissioners. So thank you. Now, so moving on. I believe it is time for the director's report.
So it looks like March 20th will be canceled. We didn't have an item tonight for, you know, to come back and we don't have a public hearing item trending. Is that correct, Joel and Tom? So yeah, we're going to go ahead and cancel March 20th. April 3rd, we're trending to bring back the lead ordinance. This was something that the commission discussed to update or remove the lead requirement. Glenn has been working on additional information that was requested, so we'll bring that back. It does have to be a public hearing, so we'll know closer as we get to that date. We have had communications with the, the Kia development team and we are expecting them to res, to submit more information in response to the public hearing that was opened a couple months ago. And so based on when they submit that information, we are thinking that that'll be brought back to the commission either in the second meeting of April or maybe in May. And as I mentioned earlier this evening, the commission did get an email from the city clerk's office stating that there is, they're inviting all commissions and commissioners to attend training on March 31st. But as I stated earlier, this training covers that. So, but you are welcome to go to it and show how awesome you guys are, that you already know all the information, but you don't have to. And that concludes my report.
Terrific. Thank you. Reports from members of the commission. Commissioner Stein, or anything? Okay. Commissioner Harrison, Harrison? No. Commissioner, no. Commissioner Washburn?
I have a question about how the individual planning commission and, and actually commission members throughout the city in all the various commissions. Their avenue of, I'll use the big word ideation when there are things that we know about that need to be communicated to the council or to the staff or to the management organization. Are there, in fact, this is probably a question for John as much as anybody. Are there experiences there that we can take advantage of the experiences of the many commissioners that we have in helping the, the city council and the city and its citizens deal with issues? We've just gone through a crisis because of the Lost Hills landfill, as we all know. And, you know, there are many issues that are involved in a thing like that where you wind up having to deal with potential political impression that you make on the folks who have power to make decisions that are seemingly extraneous to the issues at hand. I mean, we're trying to annex territory and at the same time, you, you have to basically mind your Ps and Qs when you're being critical of other decisions being made, you know, that are, you know, not in your best interest as a community. So we didn't address any of that this evening, although it's basically a common sense issue. But when, when all the parties are doing 110% in Calabasas to, you know, support the community interests, how might, how might we, I guess, accommodate some of those additional things? I know we can get on the website and make a suggestion or you can make a phone call and talk to a commissioner or to a council member or to a staff member. But in encouraging people to be creative and supportive and active in dealing with the betterment of the community, maybe not this meeting, but at a future meeting, it would be helpful to know what, you know, what prerogatives do we have as individuals, particularly when you're a quasi judicial member of a commission? Because our cable and technology community, or commission has a similar kind of function, not quite the same, but, and the library commission is quite separate as well. But each of those commissions that we've nurtured and, you know, and brought into our orbit are really important to the strength of the community. So if there's a general comment you have, it'd be great. Or even, Michael, if, if there's something that's already top of mind, if we can share that in this discussion or if we need to agendize it for a future meeting, then I'd, I'd like us to think about what that might be.
Yeah, I can, I can briefly address that. I mentioned earlier that the city clerk is working on a, a commission procedures and that will actually go through a public process. I believe it should go to council at some point. That'll kind of outline some, some of this, including for most commissions, development of some sort of work plan that would have to be approved on an annual basis. And so that kind of gives the council visibility into what's happening with that commission, what they're discussing, established priorities. This commission is different because your duties are very well-defined and you always have something to work on. The other thing I would comment on is the way that commission appointments are made are on a council by council basis. So each council member appoints commissioners and then they're ratified by the, by the council. So I would tell you that for sure, you're appointing council members a conduit and that's a good place to start, is to talk to the council member. And also if you can arrange a meeting through that with the city manager, for example, that is a good way to get in contact. And the dialogue that happens here as well, all gets reported back to city management. So these are things that are continued to be discussed. So we've heard at the last meeting, there were concerns raised about the safety element. Those are things that we've begun discussions with at the city management level, how to look at that. The discussions about the general plan in general and what are we going to do with that? Those are issues that I've been raising at, with the city manager as well. So those things are happening. But if you have very specific things that you want to talk about, I would say start with the council and you're appointing council member. And then also let's wait to see what they come out with, with the commission procedures because I think that'll outline some of the things that you're talking about.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Leah. Anything?
Nothing.
Okay. I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Hearing no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.